Yes, you can. Recording in progress.
That'll make this a lot easier later.
Thank you. So I think we'll give Michael the floor. If you have a quick presentation that you would like to offer all of us and then we can follow up with some questions.
Yeah, sure. I mean, the presentation that I gave Joe. We could run through that quickly. I don't know. Usually what I like to do is ask people how much they know about fuel cells in general, not just fuel cell energy, but fuel cells in general. And you know, why would they be interested in that? So if there's any hint, I mean, is there a general knowledge? Is there a high level of knowledge? Okay, so what I'll do is, yeah, I got you. I'm going to share my screen and I'll pull up that that presentation and we'll just run through it. I'm not going to go through every single slide ad nauseam. I'll just go through it quickly. I'll hit on the spots that I think are probably most important to people like yourselves in this town and that kind of thing. Also, I'll just go over a little bit about the technology. So you have an understanding of what it is, what it does, what to expect from it. You know, people run the gamut. Somebody's got to enable screen sharing. I can't share my screen right now. Whoever the host is, yep. So it runs the gamut with people understanding what fuel cells actually are and do and can't do and things like that.
You should be all set to screenshot.
Yep, I got it. Let's see, okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
Good. Let me get back to the beginning here. It was on the last slide. We're done already. See how quick that went? So I'm Mike Palmer from Fuel Cell Energy. I'm business development. Work on putting these things out in the field. That's what I do. Just a quick on fuel cell energy. We're in Connecticut. We have our headquarters in Danbury and our manufacturing in Torrington. We do fuel cells. That's what we do. And we have four basic strategies or basic target areas that we go after. And this helps to understand what a fuel cell does. We do distributed generation, distributed hydrogen, hydrogen energy and storage and carbon capture. And you can see, I mean, we're all over the world. We have some large customers, different things like that. We do municipalities, utilities and end users, all sorts. All right, let me, for some reason, my computer thing here messed up. Okay, well, that's fine. When you're looking at a fuel cell, typically most customers, there's three major objectives. One, resiliency or reliable supply of energy. Two, competitive pricing. In other words, it's got to make sense financially. And three, it meets some kind of sustainability goals, or at least helps support your sustainability goals. So those are the three major areas that we typically look at when we go and talk about these types of projects. We have two types of technology available. There's actually seven different technology types of fuel cells in the world. There's only about five that are commercially available. And you'll hear different names called molten carbonate, solid oxide, phosphoric acid, polymer electrolyte, I think it is. I always forget the P E M acronym. But the three majors that you're going to think about are solid oxide, molten carbonate and phosphoric acid. Those are the ones that are used for stationary fuel cells. The other types are typically for transportation and motive applications such as forklifts, trucks, things like that. So the first one we'll talk about is a molten carbonate application. And actually, this little diagram helps to understand it a little bit. A fuel cell is very simply two pieces of metal with electrolyte matrix put in between. Very similar to a battery, except it's fuel. We then take those cells and you put them in a stack. And that's what it's called. It's called a fuel cell stack. You put that stack in a box. That box is called a module. The modules are rated based on size, similar to your batteries where you have an A, double A, triple A, nine volt CDs. Well, these are rated on typically kilowatts. So for example, our molten carbonate application comes in a fourteen hundred kilowatt module. And that's the base module you will get running. Basically, what happens is nothing combusts. There's no combustion. There's none of that. It's an electrochemical reaction similar to a battery again, except it's fuel. Now, everyone was asked what the fuel, what kind of fuel is it? Well, every fuel cell out there needs hydrogen to work. And the question always comes in to play as to where do you get your hydrogen or how do you get your hydrogen? There's two major ways of getting hydrogen right now and one's electrolyzing water through electrolysis. Or you do methane reforming, which is you basically take a methane molecule, blast steam across it and breaks it down. Methane molecule, for those who remember their high school chemistry, C H four. So you get C and four molecules of hydrogen, it breaks apart. That carbon then combines with oxygen in the atmosphere and you have CO two and hydrogen when you do reform. So our molten carbonate application, very simple. Like I said, what we do is we can take methane directly, reform it on the cell itself. And then use that hydrogen to create electricity and heat. Others, other technologies like the solid oxide and phosphoric acid, you have to do that reforming if you're using a methane prior to it. So what it means is there's just an added component or function of equipment that's needed to be able to reform that methane into hydrogen. The solid oxide, the difference on this is mainly in the size. You can see over here on the left, it gives you an idea of what a stack size look like. This is only about seventeen inches high. On our molten carbonate, the cell itself is about two feet by four feet. And it stacks up about nine feet high. And we put four of those in a big box to make that module I talked about before. The solid oxide stack, which you'll see is in this middle, you can see how there are a row of stacks put into a, what looks like a tank. A kind of one of the tank, that's a module. And those can be sized anywhere from two hundred fifty kilowatts up to a one megawatt grouping of them. And then anything above and beyond that. The neat thing with the solid oxide technology is there's three different modes you can use it for. We call, we label them those modes. You use a power generation mode, which is just a straight, normal fuel cell operation that generates power. Electrolysis mode because a fuel cell is basically an electrolyzer and it just runs backwards and acts as an electrolyzer. So they can do, create hydrogen if you apply electricity to it. And then there's what we call energy storage mode where it can alternate back and forth. So you can create hydrogen, put it in a tank, use it for long duration storage, and then later on, take that hydrogen back out, run it through the module and get power. So that's a quick overview of technology types of things like that. Some of the basic things to remember that are different between each technology is the efficiency and the heat value. In solid oxide fuel cells, efficiencies run upwards of sixty to sixty-two percent electrically efficient. And that's just a measurement of, you know, how much energy you get out of the energy you put into it. So if you put in so much BTUs of methane, you're going to get sixty some odd percent out of it. Whereas a molten carbonate, you get about forty-seven percent efficiency. Now, to give you a frame of reference, if you think about basically a traditional generator, like an engine or a little small turbine, they run anywhere from about twenty-six to thirty-nine percent efficiency. So you get a lot better efficiency on it, which means your fuel cost goes down for dollar per kilowatt kind of thing. This is just a quick slide showing the different types of products that we offer in the way they're configured. They're all based on those cells and it's just a matter of how do we package them? That's how you get these different types of products. The other neat thing to remember from the output on these fuel cells and the different technologies is the amount of heat you get out of these. A solid oxide technically is one of the hottest running fuel cells out there. However, it is so hot, the form factor has to be small. As you noticed before, we were a seventeen inch stack and the cells themselves are only like about six, eight inches in diameter. The reason being is if we made them as big as the molten carbonate, they'd actually melt, right? I mean, they get too hot. You can't control the reaction. So since they're smaller, the offtake of heat is a lot less. But that being said, they're ideal for using for domestic hot water heating and that type of thing. So if you have an application such as an office area, a commercial building area where all you really need heat for is to heat hot water for domestic use. Solid oxide works well. The molten carbonate, on the other hand, is the next hottest, but it also can capture a lot of that heat that's coming up because of the form factor, the size of it. The heat that comes off of a molten carbonate, the exhaust is upwards of about seven hundred and twenty-five degrees Fahrenheit. It can be used for any kind of heat application, anything from eating hot water for boiler preheat to running an absorption chiller for chilling. And so it's a very, very good application if you have a heat use. And what that means in the long run is that'll actually save you quite a bit of money on your heating side as well. Some basic applications that you'll hear about with these things is combined heat and power, which is similar to what I was just talking about where the units produce both heat and power.
Yeah. Hey, can you do me a fair, can you go back really quick and just really high level overview on the MCF? And how it ties in with a, with the sewer treatment plant? Because there were some questions on the one of the, the first meeting I had, the topic came up and maybe you could just give a little color on that.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And I think I had, did I have a slide in here with that type of application?
It was the third one on the previous slide. But yeah, if you have one specific to it, that's great. Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
No problem. Feel free. I always like people interrupting because I hate hearing my own voice. It's much better if it's a conversation than me just sitting here spouting things out. So the molten carbonate, one of the greatest applications for this is at a wastewater treatment plant, especially if you have a digester at that treatment plant. If you have a digester, you end up having a methane offtake from that. So you have a methane source of fuel for the fuel cell, which is a green source because it's coming from a digester. So it helps with your emissions and all the other qualifications that go along with these things. Plus, it drives down the cost of the fuel. Not only that, the molten carbonate is ideal for a wastewater with a digester application because of the heat. Digestors require quite a bit of heat. So it's ideal to be able to take the heat off of this, run it through the digester. Therefore, you don't have to run another separate boiler, which is more fuel, more equipment, things like that to run the digester. A good example of this is out in California. We have one out in Riverside, California, a wastewater plant where we're running the molten carbonate fuel cell, the one point four megawatt rated one. We give the site itself one megawatt worth of power. So they run the site. They're giving us the digester gas to run the unit itself. And then we give the heat to run the digester. The other interesting thing is we're actually also taking some hydrogen off of that one. And using it for their fleet of vehicles. So if you look at it from a standpoint of operationally and what it means from a sustainability standpoint, it's a closed loop system where it's a completely green system because you use it a green fuel. There's no exhaust. There's a net zero carbon exhaust. And you're also getting rid of, if you're into the science-based targeting initiatives, the SPTIs, the scope three emissions that come from your fleet of vehicles. So it's a, it's a really good application when it comes to that. And we can talk more about that as we get in applications. Again, combine heat and power, straight up. This is bread and butter. This has been done for years. Very simple. We drop one of these in, hook up the heat lines, hook up the power lines and you're good to go. The other issue to think about, especially when you're talking about a municipal type application, is whether you want it to be a microgrid or not. And from a standpoint of the definition of a microgrid, microgrid just means you can totally separate from the utility and operate your loads without the utility being connected. There's a couple of different ways of connecting and doing microgrids. This, this top description is not really a microgrid. It's just how it's traditionally connected to the grid. What this means is you can export to the grid if you have excess generation, that's net metering. And if the grid goes down, the unit goes down as well. So you're out. So it's not independent by any means. The seamless operation is the ultimate microgrid in the sense that what this does is you actually, the easiest way to think about it is from the fuel cell, you have an extension port that goes directly to your loads. So your loads are being fed by the electricity generated from the fuel cell first before anything else. So now what that means is if the utility goes down, you will never see a hiccup on your line at all. Great example of this is Pfizer and Bratton. Pfizer and Bratton has their R and D campus there where they do a lot of testing for the FDA for drugs. During this testing, they have to have very, very precise instrumentation that's affected by any dips in power or brownouts and things like that. So what they did was they purchased fuel cells from us. We connected those fuel cells directly up to the lab buildings that do the testing. They actually also have traditional generation on site, about ten megawatts of traditional gas turbines that they use to power the rest of the campus. And then they use the utility as a backup, literally. So they never see a problem. Now, this is a very expensive way of doing it. And more often than not, it's only used in applications like Bratton. If you're going to do a microgrid for a municipality, the best way to do is what we call a drop and pickup scheme. Simplest way to think about this, it's very similar to when you have backup generation on, on a unit, on a building or something like that. If the utility power goes out, there's usually a couple seconds delay before the power comes back from the backup because the backup generator has to start up. This will be quicker than that mainly because the fuel cell is always operating. So the only delay you'll ever see is these two little diagram things here are breakers. They open and close. So if the utility goes out, it's just a matter of how quick these breakers open and close. So it's a matter of a few seconds. Typically, you'd see a little dip in the power for the facility that you're at. So then we talk about the CO two capture. I'll just say this quick. One of the things we can do is we can capture CO two for utilization. It's great in the food and beverage industries. We talked to a lot of the, the bottlers. If you think of the two major soda producers, blue and red, everyone knows who they are. They use CO two as a raw material. So they're, they love this because they get power for their plant. They get heat. They need heat in the process as well. And they use CO two as a raw material to feed into their process of bottling soda. The interesting thing here is if you look at this right side, what we can do is we capture the CO two off the back end of the fuel cell itself. But the other nice thing we can do is we can actually take, if you have any existing boilers on site, take their exhaust and run it through the system and the whole system acts as a scrubber. What that does for you from a sustainability standpoint is if you're trying to get to net zero or zero emissions from the site, if you have boilers on site, you're always going to have an emission. But if you take that boiler exhaust and run it through the fuel cell, you limit that emission. And if you capture it, you get it down to almost nothing. So it's, it's a good way of doing it. One of the other things we do is produce hydrogen. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of the towns are looking at their fleets of vehicles. Not only just the cars. I mean, it's easy to say, we're going to do the passenger vehicles and as electric, battery, electric. That's great. But you have trucks, you may have buses, if you have a mass transport system. Those things are not going to operate as well on strictly battery. Right? I mean, especially the trucks. If you have trucks that use in the winter or for construction or anything like that, the battery's not going to be able to drive those motors. So you use a hydrogen convergent to your truck. You have hydrogen pulled off your fuel cell. Reduces your cost of operations. This, we could go, this is just again, another marketing blurb, reliable, resilient, sustainable. Those are the three areas we look at. Just to give you a brief idea what the product looks like. This is the solid oxide fuel cell. The, the size on the right is what it looks like in its two hundred fifty kilowatt size. This one down on the bottom is a one megawatt block and that's roughly about fifty feet long and about ten feet wide. So just give you an idea. The two bread and butter ones that we have are our molten carbonate, which is, this is our fifteen hundred and don't ask me why marketing loves to call it fifteen hundred when it's a fourteen hundred kilowatt unit. But that's marketing, so. So it's fifteen hundred and it puts out one point four megawatts worth of power. And you can see some of the details here of what it puts out, things like that. Gives you a footprint size. The easiest way to remember for the fifteen hundred, you need about a tennis court of space. And then for the three thousand, which is the next one, which is two point eight megawatts, very simply, it's two one point four modules put together that share the balance of plant equipment. That one's about a tennis court and a half. So it gives you an idea of what the size of space you might need. Some of the advantages of fuel cells. Again, I mentioned the efficiency. If we look at that compared to say solar and wind, solar is running about fifteen to twenty-two percent efficient in Connecticut. Wind, on the other hand, is thirty to fifty percent. If you get offshore, you can get upwards of seventy percent, but it's intermittent, like we all know. Traditional generators, twenty-five to thirty-nine percent. So it gives you an idea of where fuel cells stack up compared to other generation types. You get the multiple outputs. We can produce electricity. We can produce heat. Actually, you can use water that comes off of it too. If you have different uses for the water. I wouldn't drink it. It's drinkable. But it's very heavy mineral water. So it's great for irrigation. If you have a car wash situation, like for example, our project with Toyota out in California, they have boats coming into the port of Val A. They're offloading the new cars. They need to wash them. California has an issue with water. They actually have a fuel cell that's generating power for the facility plus hydrogen for their hydrogen vehicles. And we use the water for their car wash. So it's, it's a great use of all the different outputs. From a space standpoint, you're not going to find a clean generation source that's a better space user. And you can see some of these ideas. Excuse me. As you get into and reading this, I mean, if you look at solar panels, they're twenty watts per square foot. Whereas molten carbonate is depending on the size, the unit, in other words, the one point four to two point eight setup. It's six hundred and twenty-five watts to seven hundred and fifty-five watts per square foot. And the solid oxide actually gets up to about a thousand watts per square foot of space that you need. As I mentioned earlier, these things are reliable. They run. They're like a battery. As long as the fuel is applied, they will react and they will run. They don't come offline. They don't go up and down. You don't turn them on and off. You just run them. So the ideal situation is where you have a base load of energy need and we put it in and it runs and covers your base load. The fuel is flexible. Any kind of fuel that's hydrogen based can basically be used, as we mentioned earlier, to digest their gas. Primarily a methane molecule is typically what we look for of any kind of type. And then we have processing skids that we can put in front of the unit itself to clean up whatever fuel comes into it. And then they're easy to sight. They're very, very quiet. Again, since there's no combustion, the only noise you may hear is a fan that moves the gas along. It's not at high speeds. It just moves it easy. More often than not, the noise you hear from any of these, if you come by them, is the gas line coming into the facility, going through the gas utilities meter. That's what you hear. For example, we have University of Bridgeport where we had a site that was literally right next door to one of the dean's houses. And it's very, very quiet, extremely quiet. So. Let's see, what's the next one? I don't know how familiar you are with three D's in there because I thought it might be interested for their, the, the use of incentives.
Before, before you jump to that, can you just give a, a quick blurb on and how it's easy for us to install on a brownfield site?
What was that again?
And how easy it is for us to install on a brownfield site, how we get some, some relaxed rules by doing that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, that, that plays actually right into these programs.
Good.
You know, in, in state of Connecticut, fuel cells are considered a class one renewable on natural gas. So it's not like it has to be an absolute zero emission. They're considered class one. So because of that, they play in two incentive programs. The first one's called the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Program or SCEF. This has been in play for two years. We're on year three right now. It's a six-year program. Basically, what it is, is the legislature said to the utilities, we want you to buy more class one renewables. So you have to buy so much every year. And so they go out and you do a bid into it based on a dollar per kilowatt hour that's produced and they buy the power from the facility. What happens here is when you make that bid, if you have a brownfield or a distressed area and it's on the Connecticut brownfield or distressed area list, you actually get a preference on your bidding. And I believe, if I remember off the top of my head, it's a twenty percent reduction in your bid price. These are reverse auctions. Basically, they take the lowest price first and go up. So that helps quite a bit if you have that type of land. These things are great for any kind of land that needs to be, you know, blanked on the word, remediated because they basically act as a cap. I mean, it's a big, large cement slab. We put all the equipment on it and it's just like a cap. I mean, I was over at an Avon Grid site last, two days ago down in Bridgeport and they had just recently spent a ton of money putting about two feet of pavement across a parking lot because they had to cap it. And they get nothing out of it. It's a blank spot. So that's why it's nice to have these. This program for a town like yourselves, the ideal benefit you would see from this is probably just the tax payment. So you'd get a tax payment from it. You would have a developer come in, whether it be us or somebody else, who says, we'll put in the unit. We're going to get the tariff from the Shared Clean Energy Facility Program and you guys get a tax base because we're on your property kind of thing. Very simple, very easy. Some towns have asked whether or not it made sense for them to do that. Honestly, you can be the developer. If you wanted, that would mean you'd own the unit. Most towns don't want to own a small little power plant. So it makes sense to do it this way. The other program is called the Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solution Program. It's, we call it the NRES. This is a brand new program, just started. Some of you might be familiar with the older program, which was the LREC-Zrec program. That went for about ten years. Last year was the last year of it. This is the replacement for that. What this does is combine that program with the virtual net metering program. The nice thing with this for towns such as yourselves is you can get the virtual net metering side of it. So for example, if you have a brownfield site or distressed site of some kind, or even if you just want to put this at the wastewater plant and you generate more power than you need at that site, you can then assign other meters within the town to take advantage of that power and virtually get that credit. So it, it's a nice program when it comes to that. Now, that's not a microgrid. That doesn't mean if the units, if those other power goes out, those other buildings are getting power. They're just getting the credit for that, which is good. There's two different tariffs or two different ways to play into this program. One's called the buy all tariff, which is very similar to the, the SCEF program where basically you're feeding power to the district, this EDC first or the utility. To the utility first. And then you're getting a credit for it on site. The other one is what we call the netting tariff, which means that if we were to place this, for example, at the wastewater plant, the wastewater plant would get the power first. And then any excess would be netted to the grid. And that netted amount can be used virtually as virtual net metering to apply to other accounts. Now, the good thing with the netting tariff, what that does for you is it helps reduce your demand at that site. So where the buy all tariff, you're giving that power directly to the EDC first. You do get a bit of a credit because of delivery charges, because you're local. But you don't get that demand change because you're actually still pulling the same amount of power you were before having an onsite generator through that meter into your site. Whereas in netting tariff, since we're connected behind the utility meter, you're pulling less power. As we all know, if we look at our electric bills, especially in the state of Connecticut, typically your demand charges can be as much, if not more, than what your generation charges are. So reducing that demand charge can be significant. Typically, what we've seen on, on different projects that we've done, that demand side reduction goes down by anywhere from twenty-five to fifty-five percent, literally. So it's a big savings. It could be. So again, the benefits, if we were to do a buy all tariff, you'd receive a slight credit for delivery. It's a small amount. It's not that much. I think it's like, it's like a half a cent. It's not, it's not really a lot of credit, but the thing you would get there is the lease and the tax payments for the property. If we were to do this as a netting tariff in the NRES program, you would get the full benefit of the power. It would basically be a power purchase agreement of some kind with you as the offtaker. That generation rate would most likely, and otherwise you wouldn't do it, be less than what you're paying for generation today through the utility. And you also reduce your demand charge. You also get to use that lower rate power virtually for other meters around town. So that's, that's where that goes. Let's see, that was it. I tried to do that fast. It was a lot. But, you know, feel free to ask questions. In fact, I encourage it. Did I cover everything? I hope I did.
That was really informative. Thank you so much, Mr. Palmer. That's, that's really interesting. Some fuel cells weren't something that I actually had a lot of experience with before that. And I don't know, I had a lot of people in the public do. So that was really very comprehensive in a, in a quick, you know, twenty, twenty-five minute presentation. I have questions, but I'm not going to hog the floor because I'm not a commissioner. So I'm going to turn it over to everyone else first.
Yeah, we could. That was, that was a quick one. Trust me. I mean, you know, when we do specific applications and start talking about these things, you can get into a long-winded conversation. So I hope I educated you enough to understand what these can and cannot do. I mean, they're not perfect. I hope I educated you enough to understand what these can and cannot do, I mean, they're not perfect. By any means, none, none of the generation sources out there are. Even though if you talk to the solar guys, they always love to say solar's the magic bullet, it's not, so, but.
I'll make a comment to start the uh the free flow, um, to your point, Mike, you know, fuel cells aren't the cure-all answer for everything. I think every energy technology has its place in the world, we need fossil fuel power, we need nuclear power, we need grid power. But it is, we could also supplement using wind. Solar and fuel cells, I mean, and and that's what, when you, when you're, when you're buying power from the grid, that's the mix-up. Certain powers coming from renewable energy sources, and certain powers coming from fossil fuels, certain powers coming from nuclear sources. You know, we just, you know, you just don't plug into ever source and get electricity, it comes from somewhere, so. I think everything has a place in its world. And, you know, there are good applications for different technologies. You know, being biased, being from fuel cell, I like fuel cells because, you know, I'm an environmental guy by trade. And, you know, being able to develop on a brownfield site. And then get that credit and and qualify for those programs. And then get the output on the small square footage, you know, you know, for for the the power demand. With the benefits of heat recovery and maybe some hydrogen distribution or or something like that, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. Um, you know, but that's just me, because, you know, because I love this place and I love the technology. But then there's a mean that, you know, a fuel cell, some solar panels can't work together and any one of our sites downtown. I mean, that's just, I'll start the wheel by saying something like that.
And and just as a, as a quick comment to that, you're absolutely right. I mean, if we look at the grid and and electricity support and development over the years. It's based on multiple types of generation, you would never want a system that's strictly one all the time. So when we look at microgrids. The ideal microgrid setup is a fuel cell for baseload. Solar panels for intermittent and batteries for peak shave. What that means is literally you will never see a hiccup, never see an issue. And you're using the batteries to dig over those high day loads during the day, or, you know, whenever the peak is on your microgrid, it could be different times. And you're using the fuel cells as a baseload to run and make sure that you keep that level. The solar panels are charging the batteries when they have excess power, because. One thing with solar panels, and and the reason why their efficiency is off, obviously, is because at night, there's no power. But what tends to happen with solar panels, and if you talk to most of the solar panel guys who develop these things, especially larger farms. When they are generating power, they're generating more than you need. So what do you do with it? So the ideal thing is put it in a battery, use that battery for peak shaving when you need more power. So that's ideal. So anyway, I'll stop talking for a second. Yes, Jen.
Um, so there's um been solar, solar panels at my school for about ten years and the inverters right outside my, my classroom. Um, and I know when they, when they put them up, they usually say, oh, you know, these solar panels are going to last twenty to thirty years. And for now, from what I've seen, um, there are people who come and maintain the um the inverter once in a while, and I know they have replaced some of the panels on the roof. But they're, they seem to be um to last a pretty, pretty long time. And so I was just wondering how fuel cells compare with that in terms of like maintenance and longevity.
Sure, 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 not a problem. Yeah, now, on on the solar panels. Yes, there's maintenance, typically the maintenance is a squeegee guy, right? I mean, for lack of a better term, there's somebody going up there washing them off, because you gotta, they get dust on them, their efficiency goes down. They do lose some efficiency just over time. That's just nature of the beast, they wear out a little bit, so to speak, but they're still good. The fuel cells themselves, we go back to the design of it, you have the cell, we put it in a stack. It's like everything in the world, you don't get something for nothing. So when you're doing that electrochemical reaction, you're using up some of those chemicals that are in that cell. So the cells are replaced every so often, and that's called what we call stacked life. Right now, our molten carbonate fuel cells run at about a seven-year stack life. And they were placed at seven years. The solid oxide fuel cells run about five years, but those also can be configured to replace uh or what's called hot swappable. So we could replace those while the unit's running. The molten carbonates, we have to take the unit down, because if you remember on the molten carbonate diagram, it was a big ripped looking box. Basically, what we do is we show up with a truck. With another box, disconnect the old box, put the new box in, go away, start it up. Those intervals happen, like I said, they happen once every seven years. There is only one other time that these things come down for maintenance, and that's once every eighteen months. For about four to eight hours, and that's just to change out some of the materials that are in the filters. And that's all it is. Other than that, there is no reason to bring these down. Now, that's not saying they don't come down. Because, you know, if you get a squirrel that runs across the wrong wire. It's going to trip the unit just so it protects the unit, we don't want the unit to go bad. So there are external factors, just like you would have for any other generation source. Even your solar panels, their connection to your grid. If there's a trip somewhere, they're set to trip off to protect that invert. So it's the same idea. I'm that good? No more questions?
No one, Jen, after you.
No, go, Michael.
So, okay, so I'm, I'm interested, this is, it's a very interesting technology in terms of its, its vast superiority in terms of energy efficiency. Compared to the traditional generator is quite, it's clearly the, the best thing. I mean, you, it, it is a, you call it, it's a class one renewable, right? It's not basically drawing the infinite free energy the sun gives us, but for. Pulling out biogas or even uh natural gas, it's getting pretty good returns on energy. But in terms of what the town can do, as, as, this is the Conservation Commission, it's an advisory regulatory commission. Um, a a recommendation commission, not regulatory, you know, this commission could make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen about. Things we should pursue, things that we would like to do, what can? A municipality do? What steps can the municipality take to encourage the adoption of these, to speed it along? Um, is this something that should be brought before Economic Development Commission to work with local businesses? What can we do? From this position to help this technology?
Right, well, the, the key thing that I've always found with talking to people about this is you really need to have a good idea of what your goals are. Right? What are your goals? If we start talking to customers who have goals of, well, all I want to do is reduce costs. That's it, I don't care about anything else, if I'm polluting, I don't care, right, that kind of thing, well, okay, fine. Go talk to somebody else, because I'm not going to do that for you, right? But if your goals are to help reduce your cost of energy and also impact your sustainability goals somehow. Um, we can do something there. Now, when I say that, you want to have your goals straight, because I run into it quite often, especially in the towns. Because the biggest supporter in the towns is always solar. It's always solar as as the competitive technology. Look at what you're getting from it. When we talk about solar, in fact, we just submitted uh to uh Pura uh in in discussion around the SKEF program. The SKEF program. For the last two years have been both fuel cells and solar, those are the only ones that compete in the, in the SKEF program. They made a lot of changes after last year's program because of the solar issues, and the issues with solar are, one, where do you put them? If you put them on a roof, that's fine, that's great, now you got to consider, well, what happens to that roof? When I have to replace the roof? What happens? Who's responsible? All that, I mean, make sure. There are solar companies out there that do a good job taking care of you, there's other ones that uh don't. So it, it's like anything else out there, you got to make sure you get that covered. If these are, if you need enough power that you can't put them on the roof and you're looking to put them on land. One of the biggest problems with SKEF right now is the idea of the ground underneath a solar panel. The solar panel blocks the sun. Well, you know, the ideal location for solar panels in the state of Connecticut are landfills. The problem with it blocking the sun is the grass that was holding the land in place goes away. So now you get drainage issues, you get runoff issues, there's all sorts of things that come into play. Whereas with the fuel cell, as we mentioned before, it's a tennis court, that's it. And you're not going to have those runoff issues and things like that, and you're going to get more power. The, the problem with solar when it comes to any kind of large power amount that you might need. Is that efficiency number. It's the intermittent basis. Now, everybody will come back and say, well, we'll put batteries with it, okay, that's fine, you can put batteries with it. It's going to increase your costs significantly. Um, and not only that, you're going to probably use lithium ion batteries, lithium ion batteries are only good for about a four-hour window. Right? And if there's ever a need for more power, it's not going to work anything more than that. Lithium ion batteries, as much as batteries are green. They're made from rare earth minerals. They call them rare earth for a reason. Right? So if we look at it and start talking about availability and how much we're going to have of that. They're not going to be around, and and if you get into it and look at the uh mining for lithium and things like that, it's real ugly at that point. Um, but from a standpoint of the town and looking at. Your goals. If your goal is to help provide, you know, a, a cost reduction on your power use. To get more resiliency. And to get something that meets your sustainability goals and helps match that. Well, the fuel cell as a baseload generator is your ideal application. I mean, I would say if you want to look for long-term for the town. It's always set up a microgrid. Fuel cells, solar panels, battery combination. And you can build it out in the phases too, as, as you think about it, so it's one of those things where. Well, you know what, we got the site, maybe it's the wastewater plant where we have fuel. Um, we'd like to be a microgrid, but we're not exactly sure how to do that yet, and there's always a lot of infrastructure work that has to go with putting in a microgrid. So we need to develop that, but we want to take advantage of some of these incentives. We want to take advantage of the cost savings as quick as possible. Fuel cell is going to do it quicker and more so than a solar panel. Does that answer that? I mean, I kind of wander around a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, I think there's, there's got to be a discussion internally, I mean, for, for town operations of. The town has a lot of sites that, you know, can we use those anywhere from the town? But also whenever there's businesses moving in, there are a lot of older mill buildings in Winstead that could potentially use these kinds of things. If they don't have the structural stability to do rooftop solar. We currently have a solar farm going in up on Platt Hill Road, but it's involved a lot of land clearing, and that's made a lot of the neighbors somewhat upset based on the calls I've gotten, so. There's, there's definitely discussion to have about these, I don't think there are technologies that a lot of people know about.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think there's something that a lot of people consider. People think generators are generators, they're big plants, or there's something you have in your backyard, they're not necessarily solely onsite thing for one.
Right.
Uh, site operation.
Right, well, and and that's, that's the thing, because. People look at it, right? I mean, the general public, and and rightfully so, there's no reason for them not to know the difference, you know. Everybody thinks they know what a solar panel is and how it works. Right? It's simple, well, the sun shines on, I get power, okay, it's not quite that simple, but yeah, okay. Nobody understands what a fuel cell is. Right? They, they just don't, because why would they? Right? I mean, most people don't. So it's one of those things where. When I say, think about what you want to do and plan it out, that's critical. Right? Because there's, there's many ways to get this, as you mentioned, the solar farm. I, I, I deal a lot with the state, with the SKEF program and things like that, and the SKEF program, they want a hundred and fifty megawatts worth of power under that program in six years. There's not enough land in Connecticut to do that with solar panels. There just isn't, Connecticut's not that big. You're just not going to get a hundred and fifty megawatts, and even if you got. A hundred and fifty megawatts of nameplate solar. You're only getting twenty-two percent of that. For real power. Whereas if you did it with a fuel cell, you're going to get that nameplate, you're going to get that power. And do it on a lot smaller footprint. So that's one of the things to look at from a, from a standpoint of a municipality that really matters, right?
What, um, hi, Michael, um, one thing I heard about, um, our particular sewage treatment plant. And I was wondering if you encountered this, was that, um, the biogas they were getting is kind of moist and has a lot of like particulate matter in it? And I was wondering if you've had to deal with that in, in other, um, sewage treatment plant applications?
Oh, abso- absolutely, I mean. Digestor gas in our parlance is nasty stuff, it's dirty, right? It's got a whole bunch of siloxanes and the other stuff in it that we don't want to put in the fuel cell. You want very clean gas to go in the fuel cell. Part of that balance of plant equipment, those little boxes you saw around the module, all of that is partly there for preconditioning the fuel before it's put in. When we get into applications around digester gas, we actually have designed and built a separate skin. Of equipment that cleans that gas prior to putting it in to our fuel prep section. So we can handle that, that's, that's not a problem, I mean, it's. As long as the fuel, the, 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 the gas that's coming off the digester is typically about a fifty-five percent methane content. Which most digisters north of that, um, it's not a problem.
I have a question, Michael.
Yes.
Um, I know we, you did touch on, you know, solar on the rooftops and that not necessarily being totally beneficial for, you know. The rooftop structure, but with a town where the buildings are so congested. They might not have an external footprint to have such a large apparatus. Would installing that on a rooftop be at all practical?
You mean installing a fuel cell?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah. The molten carbonate fuel cells, you're not going to put on a rooftop, they're too big.
Because of the heat.
Well, no, they're heavy, they're, they're, they're very, very heavy. Um, the solid oxide, the two fifty kilowatt module could possibly go on a rooftop, however. I- it's better off to keep them on the ground level. Just because of access.
Okay.
I mean, it's just easier to work with and deal with, and if you look at the solid oxide fuel cell. It's what, ten feet by twenty-five feet, it's just, it's one of those half shipping containers, basically. So you can fit one of those just about anywhere, I mean, literally, it's a parking spot or two, that kind of thing. Um, so it's, it's. We've been asked that, especially like when I deal with New York City, that area, yes, you can put them on the roof, you're not going to put a molten carbonate, not by any means, I mean. And Joe, I don't know if you know, but I think the module itself is close to thirty tons, something like that, it's some silly number. I mean, it's heavy.
I- i- it's heavy, but, you know, just to put it in perspective so people don't get scared, um. Another wonderful thing about fuel cells is that end of life, ninety-three percent of it is recycled, go back to commerce. You know, we just don't, we don't bury it in the ground like you do a solar panel or a window blade. Um, our stuff is. Oh, ninety-three percent recycling, we just had in our sustainability report. And we did have one application back in the day on top of a hotel down in Manhattan. And um, they got it there, but it was very, very difficult to maintain. Because you had to go up on the roof to maintain it, and when you had to do any rigging, you could just imagine the uh, you know, the, the problems associated with it. Um. Yeah, I agree with you, that ground level is the best application.
Yeah, 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 I mean. You know, I like to look at every site and application individually, I mean, but in general. We'd rather put it on the ground, it makes more sense.
And let me just, can I just make one more comment, and, you know, and. Again, you know, I'm being a little biased here because this is my technology, but I love it so much. You know, we give, i- if you look at wind, you look at solar, you get one thing, you get electricity. Right? Our stuff, you get multiple. Power sources, right? You can get electricity, you can get hydrogen, you can, you know, produce heat. You can, you, you know, we use water, you know, to humidify gas to operate the fuel cell. But we also reject very clean water in return, because the water gets purified. And you can use that for another application, you know, for irrigation or for car washing or so forth. Um, so just many different things that you can get, and oh, by the way, you know, we can get electricity too. And uh, you know, it's just, the, the options are, um. Are open to many different avenues, you know, you know. Based on our SureSource fifteen-hundred, like I say, you know, for a solar panel, you get electricity. And you know, when it's cloudy out, you don't, you know, when there's no wind, you don't get, you don't get electricity, you know, with a window. Our stuff keeps going and.
One of the, one of the biggest things that the, the municipalities and the towns and the cities are looking at and talking to us about now is the idea of what we call a trigon. Which is electricity, heat and hydrogen. Main reason being, everybody's looking at their fleet of vehicles. You know, how are those fleet vehicles going to be serviced and going forward? Now, I don't know, I mean Winchester, you may not have a large fleet, I don't know, um, but. It's nice to know that you can take hydrogen off. Now, the latest thing too is, as well is the idea of the hydrogen hub. In this area. Um, New England and New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania area, the northeast. Is probably going to have one of the major hydrogen hubs. But there's going to be smaller ones as well scattered all over the place, so it's one of those things where you can actually set up a hydrogen fueling station. And the nice thing is, you don't have to do it immediately. We can put the module in and run it as a standard combined heat and power or just straight electricity. And then later on, add on the equipment that needed, that is needed to be able to take the hydrogen off.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
One of the concerns I was hearing, uh, just off the top of, of. The heads of uh one of the water plant guys is that their concern was that they didn't generate enough methane at that plant. Is that, uh, how common is that? I know that's not a problem because we could mix uh gases.
Typically with most uh wastewater treatment plants, a, a digester, an anaerobic digester is not like. The gas pipeline from a standpoint of supply. It varies, right? Because you don't know what's coming in, you don't know exactly how much. Yeah, you got a good idea. But it varies. So we always have a dual fuel setup. Now, that being said. There's a lot of times where we're running a hundred percent on what's coming out of the digester. There are times when the digester slips a little bit, we gotta. You know, boost it with some natural gas or methane. Um, so either way, it's, it's not a problem. It's a very simple fix. It's, it's. It's typical. We would not. In fact, I don't think of not only ours, but anybody else's. And, and I'm going back to. I've been in generation my whole career, going back to even, you know, engines and turbines that have been on digesters. Nobody's ever done a digester strictly on a hundred percent digester gas, not unless you have like a diesel engine and it's a little small farm unit. You know, it's a, a cow farm or a pig farm and that's a little different. Um, but if you're talking a wastewater plant. No, they always supplement. Now, again, you may not draw from that natural gas line at all. Who knows? So it's, it's one of those things where you gotta look at the projects and the project specifics every time when we look at these projects.
Does anyone know if we have a digester? We do, Jen? Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? I got plenty of time. So I, I could talk about this stuff for hours.
Well, I do have one more comment. Um, we've heard a lot of pros to why a fuel cell would be a good choice. Are there any cons? Like you mentioned lithium ion batteries. I know they can be very volatile and dangerous. So are there any dangers associated with a fuel cell?
Yeah, no, well, I wouldn't say there's dangers. Um, these things are safe. Um, they're just as safe as any other generation source that's basically out there. They're certified by all the safety organizations, you know, that kind of thing. We can't put them in unless they are. Um. From a standpoint of cons. Costs could be high. They are not cheap. Right? If you're gonna, if you're going to try to generate power and that's all you want. You want to do it the cheapest way possible, I'm going to tell you, go get an engine. Just, just do that. Don't worry about it, right? I mean, if that's all you want to do, that's great. Um. You know, yeah, there's some space. Some people talk about the aesthetics. I always look at it and say, okay, yeah, you know, it looks like a power plant. However, I would recommend going over to Trinity in Hartford. Take a look at our site there. You won't even see the unit. You don't even know it's there. So, I mean, it's as simple as you could put a screen around these things, right? So from a standpoint of aesthetics, nobody will even know it's there. And not only that, it's so quiet, they won't know it's there. All they see is a fence. Of some kind.
We got a wall around the one in Bridgeport.
Right, exactly. I mean, there's a, there's a, uh, architectural cinder block wall around that to match the building. The one in Trinity, which I, I always loved that one is there's a. They came up with this fencing, which is, looks like. Black corrugated cardboard, but it's aluminum. Don't ask me where they came up with this. Their architect came up with this and it's all over the campus. So we put it around the unit and it looks unbelievable. Blends, you can't even tell. Nobody knows that there's a fuel cell there. Unless they know, right? It's that kind of thing. Um, other cons. The only other thing I would say is. You do have to be careful when you put these in because they are base load generators. They don't stop generating. So you do have to be aware of what you're going to do with that power. So when we look at these systems and we put them in, we may put in something called a load leveller. What it is is a load bank. It allows us to do some load following. Um, we don't like to use it because what a load bank is, is basically a giant toaster oven. And all it does is burn off electrons. Uh, you know, the units, just like any other generator, produce electrons. That's what they do. Those electrons have to go somewhere. Nice thing in this state, again, with the, the, uh, the NRES program. Is you have that virtual net metering option. So you can actually oversize a unit at the wastewater plant. Use a hundred percent. Take from the plant will be taken from the unit itself. Kill, it, it just drives down your demand rate. At the plant. And then virtual net meter to balance. And you'll be getting a significant savings on that as well, because typically it'll be. You know, less than whatever your generation rate is today, without a doubt. So those, I mean, there's, there's some cons, not a lot, you know?
I thought I saw in one of the slides that there was storage capacity.
That's a different application of it. Uh, when, when we talk about storage, what you have to do there is you, you basically have to create hydrogen first. You put it in a tank and then you use it again that later on. It's a reversible fuel cell. Or some applications, we're talking to people, they don't want reversible fuel cells for whatever reason, just technical reasons. They take a solid oxide electrolyzer. Strictly convert that into hydrogen. And then they have some fuel cells on the side, spread out wherever they are. And they use that hydrogen to run the fuel cell. And, you know, long duration storage, very simple. Uh, if you're worried about storage from that standpoint. And. The, the length of storage and how well it stores it. If you compare it to batteries, batteries, just like your car battery. Die if they sit. Right? When they sit and do nothing, they slowly discharge. So you have to trickle charge them, you have to constantly keep them up. Hydrogen storage, you put the hydrogen in a tank, as long as the tank doesn't leak, you're fine. And tanks don't leak. I mean, they're. We've been doing hydrogen, they've been doing propane, they've been doing all sorts of combustible gases for years. Um, they're safe. I would feel, everybody worries about hydrogen in Innenburg, you know, boom, big plant blew up now, come on. It, it's, doesn't happen anymore. And honestly, if you look at. Some of the federal government websites in comparison to safety on gases. Hydrogen is actually considered safer than gasoline in a combustible situation, mainly because it's so light, it goes up. It goes up quick. Into the air, whereas gasoline will cool and burn down low. So they do a lot of those tests with the hydrogen vehicles. Where if the hydrogen vehicle catches on fire, it goes out quick because the flame just goes up and it's done. Whereas the gasoline car. A gas comes out of that tank and now it's pooling all around the car and it's burning for a while. So, so they're safe. So.
Alright.
Any other questions? I could keep going.
My, it's six o'clock, you, 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 uh. You made very good use of the time that was allowed. I want to personally thank you for taking time out of your day to, uh. To share some information to my fellow commissioners. Uh, there was some interest. I, I hope everyone got. Um, a little bit more of an understanding and really that's the goal of it is just to start, you know. Informing people on, on what fuel cells doing, what the technology is. I mean, that was the most important part of today's meeting is just provide some education.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I would recommend the number one on the end of that PowerPoint is my name, address, all that stuff. Email me, call me. I'm more than happy to talk about this, always. Um, the other thing I would recommend is if you're thinking of doing something, think about the two programs. Coming up. I mean, you're probably not going to make this year, obviously, because the bids are already, they're going to be due in March. But they're going to be due in March of next year. And those programs can make a significant savings to the towns. So, you know, think about that. If you need more information on the programs, call me. Text me, email me, whatever. Um, like I said, I love talking about this stuff. I know Joe's into it, but you know, I. I live it, breathe it, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Anytime. Have a good night, everybody.
Take care.
You too. Thank you.
I'll take my leave now too. It was good to see you, commissioners.
Hi, Mark. Uh, well, it is six oh three. Shall we table all of our other items and then we can, next month. When everyone's in attendance, hopefully we can go over things then.
Really quick updates that at, at least I know I would like to give, uh, while I have everybody here. Um, and actually, Mike, I don't know if you'd like to share the good news about recycling.
Yeah, so recycling, recycling, we have very good news about. Town Hall Recycling is a go. Um, we finally got that resolved, so we do have Town Hall Recycling. I believe that's starting next week. They were getting all the kinks out of the system at, um, Public Works. So it's going to Public Works. It's going to start on this floor of Town Hall next week and then Hall Town Hall, including the Police Department the week after. So we're going to be recycling touches. We should have been doing it for a while, but we're doing it now and that's the second best thing. Um, so that's very good news. And then Josh has news about personnel that I think the commission would be interested in.
Yes, so we have officially hired on, and, and you might have already heard about this through the newspaper and the town's website and so on. Uh, but we've officially hired on a Director of Economic Development. Um, and I, I think given, first of all, this commission's, um, focus on sustainable CT. And additionally, um, the fact that I think conservation and economic development are often put at odds with each other, and I don't think that they need to be. I think it would be excellent if every, if I had this commission, um. Or really I had Ted visit this commission at your next meeting, give a little introduction. Um, and I know he would really like to speak to you all because by happenstance, he's actually one of the founding board members for the Sustainable CT Program. Um, so I'm sure that he can help provide a, a little more, um, you know, thoughts and guidance behind all of the work that he's done. He's joining us from Burlington, Connecticut, uh, where he was first selectman for about ten years. Uh, and he has a, an insurance and private sector background before that. Um, I can tell you, he's been in the office, he's, he's part-time, he's been in the office, uh, two weeks now and he is absolutely knocking my socks off, so. Um, uh, he's a, a great addition to the team. And I know that he's excited to meet all of you.
Awesome.
Thanks, Josh, and thanks for coming. Josh, I know, um, a lot of the other commissions are starting to meet in Town Hall. Um, so are you recommending that now for like our next meeting or?
It remains your choice. However, yes, um, you're, you're certainly welcome to meet in Town Hall and yes, more, more groups are meeting in Town Hall. And actually, I, I don't want to speak prematurely, uh, by any means, but we are constantly evaluating. Um, uh, you know, the COVID. Kind of condition and we are going to set a metric, uh, by which we determine if masks will be required or masks will be recommended in Town Hall. Now, every commission chair is welcome to enforce their own rules at a meeting for your own comfort for the, the commissioners who are in attendance. Um, however, please know that as you come to Town Hall, there are changing, uh, you know. Regulations and rules and so forth, and the governor's executive orders are, are, um. There's a question about if they'll, they'll continue in the first place, and that's what enables me to even have a mask mandate in effect. Uh, so. Just be tuned into all of that. I want to make sure that you're all meeting in as effective way as possible. So if that means that everyone's more comfortable online because you don't have to think about masks and COVID and all that other stuff. Um, that's great. And if you'd really like to meet in person, have that face-to-face interaction. That's what I want to support.
Amanda, is it okay if we talk for a minute about that? Just to just side as a group maybe or?
Oh, of course. Yes, I have to say that this evening I asked, um, for a Zoom meeting because I had to do some traveling in the beginning of the week. Out of state and just as a precaution to keep everybody safe, I made that request. But I'm comfortable going in-person meetings if everyone else is. With masks, of course, like comfort level for everyone.
And Leanne, I saw in the chat, you wanted to share something, but is your mic working or?
Yeah, sorry, my, I, I have four kiddos, so. Can you be loud sometimes, even though I asked them not to be? Um, is it okay if I share something for a moment? Michael, I, I emailed you a document, but can I take like a few minutes? I don't know if we're completely out of time.
We're a little bit over, but if it's, it's a two-minute pitch essentially of something that you came to the commission that you really wanted to talk about and share. Um, because Leanne comes to us from Northwest. She has a lot of knowledge of kind of grant. Going on in the area and she had a really good idea that I thought was. Um, it would probably just be two minutes, six oh eight to six ten, if everyone's okay with that.
Sure.
And I'll be quick. I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to present all this and see if I could get the town's support. Can I share my screen? Let's see, where is my document?
Josh, you have to unlock screen sheet. Yeah, there we go.
Um, so again, I'm an employee of Northwest Conservation District and. I have a history with, um, I was a river steward and. I could go on and on, but anyway. Quickly, I. Was, uh. Farmington River Coordinating Committee. Came to me with an idea of, you know, doing a grant. And I had this idea, you know, just as a resident, I was going to do it as a volunteer position, but then, you know, once I was hired through the district, I'm like, okay, this will. You know, make much more impact, but essentially what I'd like to do is apply for this grant through Farmington River Coordinating Committee. And I would like to propose some type of. You know. Clean river initiative in our town, especially where the still and the Mad River meet. Um, there's a lot of businesses, there's a wetland there. Um, and just. I, I would like to possibly do a. A townwide cleanup. I, I would organize that. I would like to. Make some type of pledge to our businesses in our town to. Just make them aware of, of their impact along the river. Um, you know, maybe just a pledge is to. Promising to keep their areas cleaner or maybe moving their dumpsters or just, you know, there's all, all different things that we can do. Um, and also maybe doing a, a tree planting project or, you know, a rain garden or. Um, you know, a, a buffer along that area. Um, my document goes down, but I, I can't move it. Um, wait a minute. I, I, I did email this to Michael, so I'm hoping he can share it with everyone. I just, you know, I have a map. Um, but also I know that Winston. Is. You know, wants to be a sustainable CT town and a lot of these things would go towards our points for that as well. Um, you know, it's a really, really quick. Synopsis. Um, grant, there's, there's not a specific deadline for it, it's ongoing. So. I just. Wanted to know my next steps, you know, if, how to go about getting the town's support for this and then that way I could start the process of applying for the grant. I know that was really quick and. Um, hopefully Michael can email this to everybody and everyone.
I can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
I can stop sharing.
Thank you so much for listening.
Well, perhaps we should put that at the top of our agenda for next meeting.
I will do so.
Week, right? We can all review the document once you send it and then we can talk a little bit more about it and. How we can move forward and what. We all need to do to. Support that initiative.
Sounds like a great idea. I like the cleanup idea, the townwide cleanup.
Thank you. Please.
Kind of thing, you know?
Yes, um, and if there's any, anything, you know, that I can prepare for next month's meeting, please. You know, everyone can have my email or phone number and I'd be happy to, you know, just let me know what I need to be prepared that way, you know? But thank you.
The Friends of Main Street people, um, they have, they organize one for every, um, Earth Day, and so I can connect you with, um, Candace. And then at the, at the previous one, we talked about maybe doing it once in the fall also, so it was. Bumping up to like twice a year because it, it's really successful and they get, you know, like thirty, forty people to show up, so.
Never knew that.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I guess we'll table everything else until next week, so. Thank you, thank you, Joe, for getting Michael here and thank you, Josh, for joining tonight. And Michael for setting up the Zoom and welcome, Leanne, our new member. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Alright. Thank you. Have a great night.
Evening commissioners, talk to you soon.
Thank you.